Call the meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Commissioner Giger?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Mayor Welch? Here. Please stand for the opening prayer and pledge your witness.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, in the face of many choices that life increasingly requires, help us to make right decisions and to walk in the right direction. We know your will is good for all members of our community. We also pray for our police, the fire department, and city workers for their safety in the work they do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sir, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, we have a resolution that we'd like to add to the agenda, and it would be a resolution of supporting strongly encouraging public health efforts to mitigate disease spread within our community.
When did you want this to... Under awards and proclamations, or?
New business.
New business?
New business.
New business.
Either number three. Number three.
Okay, I'm moved we add, under new business number three, a resolution regarding the COVID virus.
I'll second the resolution, or the addition, I guess. Addition to the agenda.
All those in favor?
What?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Can I have approval of the agenda?
I so move we approve the agenda with the addition.
Second to it.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those against, nay. Do we have any awards and proclamations other than... Harrison, good evening.
Good evening.
How can we help you tomorrow?
Okay, traffic update. The police were unable to get the trailer out since we last talked, and it relates to COVID, so nothing has moved on that yet. And it's probably just as well because the traffic is a little different now. It seems to be heavy in the afternoon and evening, but it seems to be kind of light in the morning, so it might be best to wait anyway, just until we get a better typical day. And I wanted to address some concerns that were raised last week, and I really appreciate the feedback. I like the discussion, and I want to, you know, talk about questions you guys have and concerns you guys have, and work together to try to resolve this thing. And one of you were concerned about Seventh Street, and you, Mr. Rogers, were concerned about A Street.
Well, my thing was just, I just compare the streets to each other, is my thought, since, because I know A Street is a busy, you know, side street.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'm not sure about Seventh Street, but I think what we need to do is we need to, we've got the trailer, I think we should get a read on the streets, and we should know for sure how much traffic is on...
Now, should we do those studies the same time for each street from two to eight on A Street and then two to eight from Fourth Street? I mean, how specific are you wanting to get these details so that we get the right traffic count?
I think we need to include early morning and also evening, because there's a lot of traffic in the early morning, and there's a lot of traffic in the evening. Between eight and nine is really some of the heaviest traffic of the day on my street. And I'm not trying to create waves or problems, I'm just trying to get traffic under control in our city. And I think it's valuable to know what kind of traffic is on every street, and then we can make, you know, some judgments. How much traffic is acceptable? And... Also, the number, the number of cars that we did on the partial sampling before was 162, okay? You remember, Madam Mayor, you got this right from Andrew, 162? And that was between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, okay? I'm an early riser, 5:45 the traffic starts, okay? And about 10 o'clock in the evening, it slows down, okay? So during this time period, we have 162 cars, and that's one direction, okay? So traffic is two ways on the streets, so we can double that, right? So we're looking at 324? Do you follow me on that? If we double that number, 162, 324?
Continue.
Easy math.
Well, one question I have is, the term "traffic" seems to be, it's a relative term, in my opinion, because you know, in some of the, in the neighborhoods, if you get three unknown cars, you're like, man, there's a lot of traffic. Or if a house goes for sale, you're like, man, we've gotten so much traffic. Well, maybe five cars going down that street, and that's traffic. So, and of course, traffic on Summit is going to be different than traffic considered to Eighth Street, which is going to be different than C Street. So I think the term "traffic" needs to be defined by you, because it may be different than what we perceive as traffic, and what's perceived as traffic to others in other parts of the city, because traffic, again, in some neighborhoods, you get a house for sale, and you have four cars go by one evening, and you're like, my goodness, this is ridiculous, we have four cars down here. Well, I mean, it's different, you know, it's a different, it's a different term compared to Summit, so I think we need to know what you are defining as traffic, because it may not be what we're thinking as traffic, so we're never going to get anywhere if we're not even understanding what you deem as traffic.
I'm talking...
Especially when you say it starts at 6:00 AM. I mean, if that's five more cars than what's there at normal, that could be traffic. I mean, that's what I'm trying, I don't know what you're defining as traffic.
The, your math is correct, but the theory that an equal number go both ways doesn't always happen, and so...
I'll tell you that the other way is actually, carries more traffic.
Okay.
From the north, from Kansas Avenue to south, in my estimation, in my observation, is actually heavier than what was sampled.
Okay. The other thing is, right now, we're in the middle of COVID-19, and the staff is stressed trying to get other areas covered and other things done, so I think they're going to not want to add one more thing to their plate right now.
Sure.
And if we can get through that...
They told me that. Officer Sampson told me that, and I'm not, I'm not trying to push anything or fight with anyone, I'm just giving you an update, and trying to engage in conversation so that we can hopefully come to an agreement.
Mr. Harrison, Mr. Taylor, I'm just wondering, you have repeatedly told us that the area is actually not a traffic hazard, is that correct? There's no major accidents or no major speeding, I mean, one out of 20 cars, maybe? I have been down that street repeatedly since you've come on the scene, and I'm lucky to see one car pass me during the day. I just, I can actually go to Maple Avenue and look down to Kansas Avenue, and then look down to Chestnut, I'm the only car. So I do this every other day, because I also live in the northwest part of town. So I just don't find this as a high priority since...
I know, I can tell.
Because of what we have, we have other stressors right now.
Sure.
And I talked to the chief, and he advised me that he was doing counts, now this was prior to us actually coming under the COVID, just kind of instantly, and so I'm sure that had to back off, didn't it, chief?
It did. We're down five steps right now.
So I have been working with the chief to try to understand what you're trying to tell us. I think what you're saying is, you're concerned about the amount of vehicles that is using Fourth Street, is that correct?
I'm concerned about the amount, but there also the speed. So it's really two things that I'm concerned about, because when I bought the house on Fourth Street, there was a certain amount of traffic, and after those signs were put up on the avenues, gradually the traffic increased, to the point when I came home last, last time from out of the country, it was just appalling, the amount of cars zipping by.
So you think they're using Fourth Street to bypass other streets?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, you know, the numbers don't lie, we're talking 162.
That was one time, correct, one day?
Right.
Okay.
But that, it was just a typical day, and...
I haven't seen that. I sat there for a couple hours the other day, and I, I didn't see 162 cars.
It's pretty much a constant dribble, and you, you might see a car, there, I would say there's seldom five minutes that a car doesn't go by. Yes, there's occasionally, but it's not common. So when I said last week that 400 cars go by in a day, that's not an exaggeration, because we have from eight to five, one way.
So how many cars go down Summit Street, chief?
Just under 17,000.
17,000? Do you know how many go down Second?
I don't, we have traffic numbers on that.
I think this is something we discussed that we were going to...
Yeah, Eighth Street, we run about 8,000 cars there.
8,000, okay. So in the grand scheme of things, we're working on it, okay? We're trying to understand what you want us to do.
Okay.
But I, I just...
More stop signs is one thing, but I don't know...
I'm not, I'm not trying to fight with you, I'm not trying to argue with you.
I don't get that impression at all, sir. I do not get that impression.
But we are talking, do you see how I'm coming up with this number of about 400 cars a day?
I don't doubt it one bit.
Okay, so I want to be clear about what I'm asking. I, I'm not going to talk about Third Street, because I think, from the concerns you guys have brought up, it's a good idea to sample every street, because I believe that we are turning our streets into expressways, especially vulnerable on the college side.
The brick streets are becoming expressways?
Yeah, Second Street is already an expressway. First Street is pretty much an expressway, except the park blocks it off, but after Maple, it's through. And now Third and Fourth, I believe, are falling into that same category. And it happened, things changed when those stop signs went up on the avenue on Fourth Street.
Yes, we know, sir.
I think part of the reason we did the stop signs was, there was a bunch of accidents, and now that we put the stop signs up, a lot of those accidents have stopped.
Sure.
Yes, it may have created more cars going one way a little quicker, and you're, but I mean, even the studies show there weren't that many speeding at that time, and our concern was the traffic accidents.
Sure.
And so, yeah, and we've eliminated it, so I think part of the stop sign goal, or most of what was done, the goal was achieved in the, in the fact that we've stopped the accidents from happening in those areas, and that's helped eliminate a hazard.
Sure.
And so I think we've done a great job, and I don't know how many accidents we're having on Fourth Street now. And I can't see people, at least I wouldn't want to go flying down a brick road in any one, any car of mine, or any one of my friend's car, or anyone. My dad's beat-up truck, I wouldn't want to go flying down that thing in it. So, I mean, they're brick roads that have dips in it and potholes, and it's just, I mean, I, I just don't see, I don't see how they are becoming an expressway on brick streets, and, I mean, maybe the young people don't, are the ones speeding, I don't know, but I just can't, I mean, the report we did did not show high instances of speeding. I don't know who in this community wants to fly down brick streets, for the most part. I mean, you just know not to do it. I mean, I've had more people complain that we have too many brick streets, because it tears our cars up, so I don't know how a brick street's turning into an expressway. I mean, we're working on it, and bringing the same data up every week, we understand it, but we've got to find a reason to want to, to have to do something, or have the chief say, all right, you need to focus all your attention on Fourth Street, because there's 600 cars, or 400 cars, or 300 cars here. Well, I mean, there's probably even more on A Street, but there's no issues on A Street right now. No one's coming complaining about going down A Street. And that's a straight-through shot, except for the block just south of Kansas, Poplar, because there's, you only go over that 31 time with those dips. I mean, I'm just saying, it's, it's, I don't know what, I don't know if we all see the concern as is living here. I mean, I don't, I don't know what we would do other than put more stop signs up, but is that going to do any, is that going to do any good?
Yeah. I'm, I understand your hesitation, because when I came home, I was standing out in the street, trying to walk across the street, and I just couldn't believe it. Where are these people going? I mean, it was just, what happened, you know? I understand everything you're saying, and I, I do believe the city is very concerned about safety. I was at the traffic safety meeting, and yeah, but I'm saying, safety is part of it, and there is also quality of life.
But if, but if we take the traffic off Fourth, is it going to go to Third Street, or is it going to go to Fifth Street? And then we, I mean, are we just going to have to make every intersection in this community a four-way stop? Is that, is that what we're, is that what we're going to have to do to make everything safe? I mean, there's got to be a fine line between overreacting and also underreacting, and right now, I don't, the data is not showing that we're not doing enough on those streets, in my opinion, and I'm just one, I'm one of the four.
As far as safety.
And so I don't, and I, and I don't see that being, that we're not doing enough on that, on Fourth Street right now. I don't see speeding tickets. I know he's, they, before COVID, the last six weeks or so, I mean, you've been here over the week for a couple times, about the last six weeks, I know they've increased patrol, they put the monitor, and they haven't had a lot of increase in any of that, and if they would, then we'd say, yeah, he's probably got a point. We've got 10 people today going 45 miles an hour down the brick roads, and I think you could say, okay, yeah, he's, there's definitely an issue here. I don't think the data or the statistics or the police are having issues with it, and I hate to start overreacting on every little simple thing that maybe it's not. You know, that's just, that's just me, I'm not going to speak for any of these, that's just my, after hearing this and seeing the same data for the last couple weeks, that's just my take, and I'm just one, so...
Yeah, and I understand your hesitation, because I couldn't believe it either, except I was standing there watching it happen, and I live there, so I see it happening. The change happened when those signs went up, that's when...
And the accidents also went down when those signs went up.
Sure, sure, I know they did, because it was craziness before those signs went up. I totally agree with you. Well, the reason I'm asking, I, Poplar, Birch, Cedar, and Walnut are the streets that have two-way stops, and the other four streets have unmarked intersections, okay? The, the way the traffic is flowing out, it's giving the people the illusion that this is a through street, and they can just drive straight through without paying any attention to the cross streets. And this is where the problem has come. Before, people were slowing down at the corners, most of them, and it was not as heavy of traffic. Now, it's heavier traffic, and they're flowing straight through.
So you're saying the stop signs are a detriment?
They, they cured one problem and created another.
Okay. Sir, I'm going to ask you to retire for this evening. I think we understand what you need, and we need to get on with our business.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have one question.
Sure.
If it's so bad in that area, how come you don't have more people from your neighborhood joining you up here?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're, they're more than willing to tell me, but people, just the way they are, they're willing to live with it rather than to do something about...
Well, no, I mean, if there's a concern, they need to come to us.
Yeah?
You know, you're one person in that whole area, and if you had 15, 20, 25 people come in, you know, I mean, it's a little...
It would be changed like that.
Well, I mean...
I don't think it'd be changed like that, but there would be a bit of...
They'd have more studies done, have more...
And we will, as soon as we get past this difficulty that we're in right now, and I'm sure you understand that, so thank you for showing up tonight.
I just, I just want to give you guys updates about...
Repetitive persistence, I enjoy that.
Okay, thank you very much.
I don't see any oh-business.
Consent agenda.
The what?
Consent agenda.
Oh, how could I forget the consent agenda? Do you have a motion?
Aye.
I so move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. There's an echo in here. It's like I'm in a box. Okay, there's no oh-business, may I have the reading of the first, number one?
A one-member of the governing body is served as a voting member of the Regional Economic Area Partnership, known as REAP, of South Central Kansas, and either one member of the governing body or the city manager to serve as an alternate member of REAP in the voting member's absence.
Okay. What do we got, Randy?
Well, we, we want to view that.
Well, with regards to the alternate member, I mean, having Randy being involved in this organization before and knowing people, I think if we're asking for him to possibly, for the city manager to be an alternate member, with his connections and his already established kind of good reputation, if you want to say, I mean, he knows the people, I would say he should be the alternate member, in my opinion, but that's just me.
I thought...
I mean, he knows, he understands it, he's been a part of it, and I just think that would be the best way to handle, if that's what we're asking for, the alternate member.
Okay, any other suggestions?
What do you think on that, Randy?
As far as the, the member?
Yeah.
I, so I can just go off of, he's participated so far, and I would say Canyon, since it has actually, you know, was on the call and participated in that, I don't know, but I don't know what the rest of you, where you're at on it, but...
My, again, my take is Canyon's got a four-year term still in front of her, I guess three, a little over three now, we've almost got a whole year. She has been involved, there is a big aspect of REAP, which is mental health, and I know, and I know that's a big part of Canyon, and she understands a lot of the mental health, and I think she would be a great person to put on there. You know, I'm always willing to help in backup needs, too, but I, I think she's been involved. She has been on the conference calls, and she's been a part of it, so...
Well, I'll make that motion, then.
And I, and I do want to stress, too, that it's a pretty open organization, so even though there's a representing member, everybody's always invited to participate in...
Just she's the voting, she'd be the voting one, so we can all go to the meeting, but when it comes time to vote...
Is this something you would consider?
Yeah.
Thank you, Canyon, I have a motion for Canyon, and the city manager is alternate.
I'll make, yeah, I'll make a motion that Canyon Giger is the REAP voting member, and our city manager, Randy Frazier, is the alternate member.
I'll remember, Mesa.
He seconded.
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay. Canyon has agreed, you agree, city manager? Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
You would have gotten it anyway if you weren't here.
Number two.
Consider a resolution amending the lease agreement dated October 1st, 1995, between Strother Field Airport and Industrial Park, the City of Arkansas City, and the City of Winfield regarding the jointly owned and operated recycling center.
Is there any comments or questions?
$2.50 a month, as of before?
Yeah. No, they went up, they went up from a hundred...
I think, I think it sold $100.
Yeah. But it had been a number of years, and so, there was quite a bit of arm wrestling and stuff that took place to get to this negotiated between Winfield and ourselves, but we got there, so, no, this, but yeah, we, everybody's agreed on this, so...
So we just need a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the resolution amending the lease agreement dated October 1st, 1995, between Strother Field Airport and Industrial Park, the City of Arkansas City, Kansas, and the City of Winfield, Kansas, regarding the jointly owned and operating recycling center for rental of $250 a month.
I second it. It's been a motion as a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Consider a resolution supporting and strongly encouraging public health efforts to mitigate disease spread within our community.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Well, it was quite a challenge you gave me, but I feel pretty confident about the direction we're heading, and it's been a fun challenge, so... Just to update you since our discussion on Friday, and for the mayor's benefits, since she was not in attendance, we entered this month with 608 positive COVID results in Cali County, that is now up over 1,100, so we've nearly doubled in about two weeks' time. We have been steadily averaging, I've been on the calls with the county since March, and it's always been in the 30 to 50 active cases range, and Tom Langer reported that that is at 238 active cases, and that does not include Winfield Correctional Facility, so that is nearly an increase of five times over what we've been seeing. And we are now up to, unfortunately, to at least 16 deaths attributable to COVID as a comorbidity. The positivity rate for our county is now at 30%, and that's not counting the testing that has now moved out to the Winfield Fairgrounds. They anticipate that's going to continue to increase, because we're just, we're just catching the symptomatic people, that's not catching, you know, the spread that we know is out there. So the discussion on Friday, of course, was what can we, the city, do, and I think you would all agree, that turned into a discussion of how can we get the community to understand what they can do. So I tried to take the thoughts that you had, and focus on the key phrases, and it kind of led to this. This was the first draft, which is not what you have in front of you, I've made some changes, but the basic idea was to challenge the residents and the citizens that they need to take individual action, that we need everyone pulling in the same direction if we're going to get this increase tamped back down a bit. Wanted to highlight the things we discussed about the hospitals, capacity issues that we're concerned about, and of course, since our meeting, now all the schools are back in virtual session through Thanksgiving, so I think people can clearly see the direct impact that has resulted from this. You know, we, as you said, we wanted to tell people to do what they can, so while wearing masks is on there and is emphasizing the imagery, the other options are there, too. There are other things people can do, we want to emphasize social distancing, and I think really one of the things we need to be pushing right now is crowds, and a lot of events have been canceled in just the last few days, because we're just trying to prevent the interactions, to give the health sector some time to get on top of this. After a call today with the Cali County PIO Working Group, I've made the following changes, which is the version in front of you. We reordered those things a little bit, they wanted schools number one, because we think that has the most impact on the community, and hospitals, number two. We're kind of working on this language, exceeding capacity is a little bit technical. It's not as simple as keep them from filling up. To be honest, the challenge is not the number of beds, it's the staff. It's the same problem with schools running into teachers, so we're trying to, I've got the hospitals working on how we can better phrase that, but we want to emphasize keeping businesses open, and if we turn this, as it looks like it's becoming a county-wide initiative, then it wasn't just city, it's all local governments, the school districts, the county as well, even the college. And so I can proudly report that just from that discussion, we're going to fill this up with at least eight logos already, and I'm going to reach out to several other entities tomorrow, but at this time, Cali County is fully on board, USD 465, USD 470, the Community Health Center, William Newton Hospital, and Legacy are the ones I know for sure, and we're going to keep adding to that. So everyone has been absolutely excited, I think they were kind of waiting for someone to make the first move, and that was us, so thank you for giving us the kick, but...
Andrew, will these go, retain posters and windows and stuff?
All over the county, it sounds like...
Well, so we're working on the distribution plan, that was one of the big discussion points today, but I just, I wanted to get your feedback on this and make sure I wasn't too far off base, because if I needed to redo all this, then I need to know now, so I'm not hearing that there's any major concerns, which is good, but...
I, I think that's very good, Andrew, I mean, you hit every aspect that I was worried about, and I'm glad Ms. Jennings sent us a mail, because at least I know one more. I've had calls from different people saying, we're going to do something about masks, and I keep telling them we're trying, and that I would, I'm glad that the schools are on board with us with doing this, because it's, it's not just me, it's somebody else. I can't force anybody to do it, but they got to want to do this. This, this is getting bad. My wife and I were exposed, and we stayed home for 14 days, and she got sick from another reason, and I had to take her to the hospital yesterday. and, uh, we stayed home for 14 days and she got sick from another reason and I had to take her to the hospital yesterday. Well, I had to stand in a waiting room for, well, until they took me in there, but it was full. And I know the staff is overworked. There's, they were full, they were full and they just can't keep going. And also that her doctor was out of the office last week from being sick. I don't know what from, but she, maybe she was just tired. I, I couldn't blame her. But people have got to realize that if we don't, as an individual, do something, that it's only going to get worse. And if, if the people out there, if they don't care about anybody, care about your family, you know? You, you may not care about me, but that doesn't bother me one bit. But I care that you are going to get sick and your family's going to get sick. So, I'm glad we're doing a start. I just assumed have a mandate, but I know people aren't going to do that and they aren't, they're going to get mad at me for saying that, but you got, if you can't take, if you can't take responsibility for yourself and your family, then there's something wrong.
I feel like this should be, uh, something to the effect of Andrew, united we stand, divided we fall. And this is actually something I learned at school, but if, if divided, we'll fail if people don't take individual responsibility for what they have been listening to for several, several months. We all hear it every day, wear masks, hold hands, social distance. This is so simple. We're not stupid people. This is not about you. This is about uniting for a cause. And that's why I appreciate your advice.
To save somebody else.
I like Uncle Sam.
You know?
This reminds me of, am I wrong about this, but World War I and World War II where everyone comes together? Come together, let's get this stopped.
That, that's the thing. They got to come and, and realize that this is something that's bad.
I don't want to take away anyone's individual pride.
You know, I think, I think that's the, the reason behind this messaging is, I mean, the, this message, this crushing COVID is up to you. It's a simple, yet in, hopefully an impactful message that the community can get behind as a whole. It's not a divisive message. It's not a, uh, what do I want to say? It's not a invasion of your rights or anything like that and it's not a political statement. It's a message and when you see us five cohesively behind it and united behind it, it's going to have more impact on this community being united as us five up here than us bickering up here. And then it's, it doesn't get anywhere. I think, uh, you really do need everyone to, to be connected. And I think we've got that with that and we've gotten even further in our goal Friday at the time was, if us five can get on board and we can share this message and we can promote this message, maybe we'll get another community out there, Winfield, or maybe we'll get the school district, or maybe we'll get the college on board. And the fact that we've got all those people already behind this message is nice to see that we're working together as a community, working towards a cause of eliminating COVID. I mean, that's, or at least slowing COVID.
Slowing it down.
Slowing it, I guess, is what would be a better way of saying that. But we're working together and right now, that's what we need to do is work together on this issue. It's, it's impacting a lot of families. It's impacted a lot of individuals and it's time that, that we are doing what we're doing now and it's nice to see us doing it united and us doing it on a, on a, kind of a, a unite, I guess, a united front, so.
Yeah, united.
I mean, it's nice to see it and I, I do appreciate Andrew for reaching out to the other public information officers and other organizations at this time. And I, I don't, I, I know the hospital will get on board. I really want to, and hopefully you can reach out to them tomorrow. And the other thing I'd like to see is see this available for social media. I sometimes think that is almost more impactful when individuals share this stuff on their business page, on their own social media pages. I think that almost has more of an impact than it hanging and just hanging in a window. I mean, yes, within businesses, it could have an effect, but I think if we share this and I would encourage all of us to share it and have everyone share it on their Facebook or their Instagram or Twitter, whatever you, whatever your social media outlet is, just so the community can see we're doing what we can as a community and that we're all behind this message. And I think it's a, uh, it's a great, a great thing to do and it's nice to see us as a community kind of rally around this and do it in a united front, so.
Well, I agree Scott, but, uh, I'd also, see it on social media, they're going to have to do it on there every day and people go in and out of businesses, Walmart.
Well, I want it both places, don't get me wrong. I think you can hit people a lot quicker on social media. Yeah, I'm not saying that.
I see it every day.
I want to see it everywhere. I mean, uh, like I said, everybody's got to do this.
And I think we need to have a lot of it on social media, but a lot of it in Spanish language, so.
Yeah, so, so far the commitments we've got, um, 470 is going to help us with the translation as soon as we finalize it. That's why I wanted to hear from you tonight. Um, we, as you can see, we need to fill in these messages, but I would like these sectors, um, industry, the schools, the hospital to kind of help us with what to put in there. So we'll get that.
We'll get their help?
Yeah, so these are social media sized images that we'll be sharing and any of these can be turned into posters. Uh, the posters, the Community Health Center actually has quite a bit of money set aside for our campaign. They were getting ready to start figuring one out and then we dropped this. So, they're going to meet us more than halfway and probably pay for all the printing. They're also going to do radio time buying and, uh, maybe some other print advertising. And then if we need more money, there's, it's a possibility, some CARES Act money, there's some other pools out there. Uh, Cali County is totally behind it. I talked to Lucas today. They're doing 10,000 care packages that they're going to give to people who are tested and when they have to stay home for four days to wait for results, supplies and food. These are going in that. They're just taking our branding that we've come up with and that they want to run with it. So, I know they've got their meeting right now. They're looking at a proclamation. Hopefully they'll issue kind of the same message you guys are issuing and I, I'm not worried about the City of Winfield getting behind it, so.
Yeah, well, they've already got a mask thing that, and, I tell you, you go up to Winfield and you see everybody wearing a mask. It's not a big deal for, for them evidently, so.
Um, so yeah, it is coming together and, uh, we'll keep reaching out to those entities that weren't present on the call today. But, you know, this is the time, if you wanted me to make any major changes in direction, I wanted to.
I think you've done a good job.
I, I do too. Uh, how, how many city staff is out in, over the whole city? It's, are, are we running low on staff?
No, no.
But I mean, we.
We have some out, but, you know, I don't know, Tony, you like in your department?
We have four out right now throughout the Parks and Facilities Department or Public Services Department.
Well, we, we are enforcing, uh, mask thing on, on employees, aren't we? As much as we can.
So I, I think you're in, on your desk, so there's a, each department's a little different on how we handle things because of the nature of the work that, uh.
Well, well, true, but if, if they're not doing something, they should be wearing a mask, right?
Well, if they're, if they're around someone close or something like that, but, you know, similar situations.
Yeah, if I'm, if I'm out there running a jackhammer, I'm, I'm not going to have a mask on because need all the air. Isn't that right, Tony?
It's true.
But if I'm just standing around shooting the bull, I want, they, I want them to wear their mask because I want to keep them healthy. Because if, if we, if it gets worse than what it is and there's a, a lot of it going around, we're on the national news. I saw tonight that Kansas is one of the top five places in the, or more, it's got, it's over 100% something. And I, I didn't catch it all. I didn't, didn't have my pen handy, so I could write it down, but that's, that's sad. And, and I, I know that we're a small community, but, you know, it wouldn't take long for a city of the size of 12,000 to get 30% of the people in town, we'd be in the world hurt.
Sir, what do you need us to do to help you?
I, I think I have what I need. If you have specific other messages you'd like to see on these, just email me.
I, I think the message is to the point, simple and exactly what we've kind of all hinted at Friday at the work session. And so I think a united message, a straightforward message is the best. Getting six different messages out there, I think it's nice to have one message that is being, you know, broadcast, I guess you want to say, throughout the community, so.
And in general, I prefer that the messaging effort still be led by County Health Department.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's fine, as long as you, yeah.
I'm, I'm carrying this forward and then I'm going to kind of hand it off to Jody, but, um, we'll keep working together. So when we get this finalized, we'll roll it out. I'm sure we'll have some kind of official announcement and then just share on social media as much as possible.
Yeah.
That's the best thing.
Well, I, I read this resolution and since we're all in agreement that something needs to be done, I will move that we approve the resolution of the City of Arkansas City, Kansas, supporting and strongly encouraging public health efforts to mitigate disease, disease spread within our community.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second for the support of the resolution, supporting and strongly encouraging public health efforts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. City manager updates.
Okay. Um, advisory board meetings are pretty much all going, uh, um, after it looks like a couple meetings this week in person, after that, they'll be all going all online. Um, the ceremony of Christmas tree lighting, um, I think that's still on. And then all the other events surrounding the, the Christmas, uh, events are, are canceled now. Um, same with most of all of, in the, the Thursday, Thursday, I think they've been canceled for a while. Um, and then reminder, City Hall and other city offices will be closed, uh, on Thursday, the 26th and Friday, the 27th for Thanksgiving. Um, and like I said earlier, um, you'd asked at the work session about how each, each department's handling and so Katie put together a kind of listing of how each department's kind of handling, um, COVID and stuff. And so that's, that's all in front of you.
Is, is that this here, I was getting through the last part of it, okay?
Yeah. Um, the other thing is, uh, on the financial report in your packet, um, Jennifer's going to be working on some budget amendments and that'll, uh, she'll come to you on the December 1st meeting to kind of talk about that. Um, and we'll have to put some stuff in the paper, so that'll probably be that, uh, the next meeting in December when, when that happens. But, uh, water fund and sanitation fund, library fund, that service fund, healthcare sales tax fund and the CID fund or, or, uh, some of the funds that she's looking at. There's no really big issues other than changing some budget authority on them. Uh, so anyway, that's just something coming up. And then, um, an update from, uh, retail attractions, uh, I think he'll probably be here on December 11th to, to do, to be at work session. Uh, and, uh, he's got a couple of businesses that, uh, that he's, uh, retail businesses that are interested in our city and he's, um, kind of working with them. One of them may come with you that, uh, that day to kind of look around. Um, and then, um, they've been working on the market data for, for our community. And so by Friday on their website, they ought to have that market data up. If you go on, onto the retail attractions website, they have a market data tab and then they have all the cities that they do business with and our city's on there now, but the data's not there yet, but, um, uh, by Friday it should be. And then, uh, the other thing, uh, starting, uh, in December, around the 10th of each month, they'll send out a monthly activity report. It'll really go with the data. I'm sure I will do that as well, so. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Randy. I, I am looking forward to the, seeing what he can do. It's nice to just see, at least something get moving already. I mean, it may not turn into anything, I understand, but it's still, it's movement, it's something, so. Is that it, Mayor?
Oh, yeah.
Anything else? I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.